First of all, what made you decide to run again?
Well, if I look back at the last two years, it has been one of the most rewarding times I've ever had. One of the most challenging as well as rewarding. You know, if I had looked at my life four years ago, there was a chance there would not be another opportunity just from things going on in our personal life and when my husband suffered a near fatal accident. And so to have the opportunity to have run for election and to have served for two years is something I will always be very grateful for.
What do you bring to the job that would make you a better choice than your opponents?
Two years ago, I ran very strongly on my fiscal and economic background. I'm a certified financial planner and so I work with dealing as a fiduciary for other people's money on a regular basis. And that was one of the things that I wanted to bring to this position. And serving on the Audit Committee as the one of the council representatives, as well as just dealing with economic development and looking for ways to increase our sales tax collections, being sure that we are prioritizing our dollars. There are always limited resources and determining the city priorities and being sure that dollars are going to that falls right in line with financial planning. And I do believe that it has been a key asset for my ability to serve.
You've taken, the council's taken some heat for a few things. One is the clapping ban and what to do about that. What did, what did you learn from that decision that's since been reversed?
Since that time, you know, clapping has been allowed as long as it's not disruptive. And it is, you know, if it, any, any activity that is designed to interrupt council meetings and interrupt the flow of business, we have to address. But I think it's been a learning curve on both sides. And it has been allowed since then, has not been disruptive and proceedings have gone on.
There is an open records lawsuit against the city that alleges open meetings violations. And I know it's a current lawsuit, so you, what you can say is limited. But it alleges things like four commissioners or councilmen at a meeting of the AEDC and some other things like that. Can you address a little bit of that to, to share voters?
Well, it is, it was three, not four, just a minor clarification. But you know, I think most of the issues that have been brought up have been a misunderstanding of what open meetings laws are. And sometimes what the definition of a closed meeting is. When you say a public hearing has closed, which means that we're meeting in public, it has been posted, everyone has had a chance, but then that part of our work session has closed for current, for any additional comments, that's not a closed meeting. And so that was, you know, I think sometimes just the definition of what does and does not constitute an open meetings violation is, is part of the issue behind that particular filing.
To, to add to that, a public hearing is a certain thing you do inside a meeting that is, is very regulated about how you do it, correct?
Right. And it's, we're meeting in, in front of the public, so there is no private discussions going on, there's no vote going on, but there is a format. There is a procedure to follow. And once that procedure of allowing comments has ended, then it's just stated, this is, the, the public comments are now closed. And so I think there was some misunderstanding with that. But I will say that, you know, it is a challenge of just being sure. I think sometimes the city is more nervous for us than we are. You know, like even when we show up, we walk through a door at just a social event and they're like, don't stand by each other, don't talk to each other. We take tremendous effort to avoid any conflicts, anything that could just in the slightest violate that. And so we'll continue to do that. There have been some recent rulings that have been changed in the court system. The legislature is considering some responses to that. But regardless of what the law is, we are making every effort to avoid any conflicts and any violations.
What are the next initiatives you want to pursue besides what's ongoing?
Well, for me personally, one of the initiatives is expanding the By the Way program. And our first year of outreach was really what I call level one engagement. And that was just educating our citizens on how our general fund receives revenues, how sales tax collections impact our ability to provide services, as well as just that encouragement of connecting those dots. This is where money comes from. This allows us to spend on public safety, street maintenance. If you're spending dollars anyway, if you redirect towards shopping locally, it helps us as a city provide services. I would like to see that expanded now to second level of engagement. That is going to be operating and interacting with our local employers and our local businesses. That on a business level, are we, whenever possible, making purchases here as well? Are they looking for local vendors? And many of them are. They are already taking a leadership role. And we would like an opportunity and a way to make that more public, to let our community know, these are some leader businesses in our community. Watch their example. Let's all be looking for opportunities wherever we have a chance. And then my, my other thing, I'm really excited about this next year, is our first time, last year, we did the Love &amp; Local Fall Event. That is an area for our local retailers. A lot of times like right after Thanksgiving, right before Christmas, is kind of a slow time. So we had looked at what can we help generate some public interest in doing some local shopping? And we designed the Love &amp; Local By the Way. And really, the main emphasis of that was just sweetening the pot a little bit with a citywide drawing and a program for a prize giveaway. And so we promoted that. We had good response. Our sales tax collections during October, typically they're kind of flat. They were slightly up. I take that as a win. And so this next year, we're wanting to get started on that a little sooner, coordinate with our local shopping centers, malls, retailers, and make that a, a big event for the fall.
How are you monitoring, what information are you tracking for the By Local campaign that makes you connect the, the sales increase to the program?
In our Economic Development Department at the city, we do have access to being able to track by industry, retailers, restaurant, what is generating our sales tax dollars. We can't track that individually, you know, that's private information. Certainly, they can't share that with council or, you know, other entities. But we are able to look and go, okay, these industries were down, these industries are up. And when it's industries that we're focusing on, then we're going to take credit for that. You know, we're certainly not hurting and I do believe that it is helping those areas.
Some have claimed, you know, that the mayor and city council are paying attention to some areas and neglecting others. North Heights, East Amarillo have been brought up by different folks. How do you address those claims?
Well, in addition to that Karen, one of the questions and, and concerns I will hear, why does the city spend so much money downtown and why aren't we doing it in other areas? And there is a huge difference in the type of dollars. First off, so many of the dollars that have been spent downtown are private money. And the city partners with some of that, but we have been a small partner in, in a lot of that. And so it is private money coming from outside. The Barfield is a perfect example. Those are outside of our city limit investors and there are no city tax incentives associated with that project. And those are types of things, the investments downtown, like the ballpark, like the embassy suites, like the activity going on with the Barfield, those generate revenues. They are not expenditures. They generate sales tax revenues. And that's, those are dollars that come into our general fund that we can spend on the neighborhood plans. We can spend for hiring more police officers and firefighters and, and fixing our streets. The development side then, so we, we look at how we generate some more dollars. But three neighborhoods, I believe it started with the North Heights, then the Barrios, and now we just kicked off last night the San Jacinto Neighborhood Plan, which very exciting, the major turnout. That's where it has to be driven. Anyway, it has to come community driven. But I'm kind of giving you way too much information. But with those, those areas, we have almost $3 million allocated through Proposition 1 funding as well as contributions by Potter County. That as those neighborhoods develop their own vision, you know, their own design, what are the most important priorities to your neighborhood? Give us feedback. We actually have some funding in place to begin implementing part of their vision.
Is there, can you name an example of some real progress that's been made on the two plans that are in place now?
The, I know with the, the North Heights, identifying street sidewalks, lighting, or where some of their parties were beginning to roll some of those out, as well as looking for grant funds. In the Barrios, several of their issues were related to looking for medical, you know, just urgent care centers. And some solutions have begun to be birthed out of those conversations. And I am really looking forward to seeing what the San Jacinto neighborhood, what their vision is and where they, where they want to partner with the city and start reinvigorating their neighborhood.
What, why closed Thompson Park Pool and what happened that it got so bad?
You know, one of the things that, it, it was a shock. You know, it was, it was a surprise to council as well as to our Parks Department. We have a new Parks Director. And one of the things that he had requested was authorization to begin just an evaluation of all of our park assets. And in that process, then as structural reviews were made on Thompson Park, there was no question, the park was unsafe, the pool was unsafe. It was leaking, it was leaking into an electrical box area. It had to be closed immediately. And as a city response, do you wait until you have some solutions for replacing it? Or do you go ahead and just get the information out? Either way, you know, it, it was going to be a difficult conversation to have. And we elected to go ahead, let's get it out there. Let the community know as much in advance as, as possible of what's going to be happening this summer. There is a neighborhood committee that has been meeting. I have been able to attend one of those and also a secondary committee that we're working on kind of putting all those committees, committees together. For again, that, it's that neighborhood, North Amarillo, that has used that pool for 50 years, has so much history with that facility and memories of finding out from their community, do you want to go back with a standard swimming pool? Do you want to look at some other water-related activities that other communities are going towards? So that committee has requested the city to give them some ideas. They're like, great, we love that you're coming to us and asking for our, our feedback, but we need some direction. So the, our Parks Department is in the process of, of laying out just some ideas, some options to present to that committee, to then expand, to present to the neighborhood and, and get their feedback.
Excuse me, that was coming. Thank you for that answer. The, the Texas Legislature is considering enacting a property tax cap on local governments. It would require voter approval for tax rate increases two and a half percent or more. What's your position on that and how would that?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that together. Cheers.
Oh, thank you. All right. Armed with a cough drop, I will, and another sip, I will ask that question again. The Texas Legislature is considering enacting a property tax cap on local governments. It would require voter approval for tax rate increases of two and a half percent or more. What is your position on that and how would that impact city needs?
I support property tax reform. It is an area that the state has needed to address for quite a while. I actually would love to see the state move towards eliminating property tax and replacing that with an increased sales tax. And that, I think it's just a more equitable form of taxation. That people with higher incomes are going to be spending more money and they end up paying the larger, a higher percentage. And I think it is more equitable. For my husband and I, we have been debt-free for several years. Our house is paid off, but in effect, because of our property tax, we have a mortgage that continues to increase normally on, on an annual basis. And so it is something that I would like to see reformed. But the current proposal, I, I do have some issues with. And primarily, especially the cap of the two and a half percent. When you look at Amarillo, our tax rate per $100 valuation is around 38 cents. You look at other cities across the state, some in the 60s, some in the 70s. So a two and a half percent limitation, restriction that you could not go, you could not increase without voter approval, impacts Amarillo much more significantly than those cities who have not been as fiscally responsible and kept their property tax lower. And so it, that is one of the things, I do think it is an unfair distribution of that cap. And being able to, I, I do support being able to ask voters if you approve a tax rate. But if you think about it, like in financial planning, we'll talk a lot of times with couples, before you make big financial decisions, you need to talk about it. You know, it's like before you buy a car, then you need to talk about it. But before you go buy a new dress, that doesn't quite require, require that kind of conversation. This two and a half percent cap on Amarillo is like requiring us to have a conversation about any dress we would purchase. It's not the big ticket items. And every time you have that conversation, it's very cumbersome. You have a timeframe, you have to post so much time in advance. There is a financial cost on each of those anytime you would run a, a citywide vote, an election. And so those, those are issues, I appreciate the state legislature take, making a, an attempt at this, beginning to look at it, prioritize it. But this particular bill, I don't think is a good solution and penalizes Amarillo unfairly.
Okay. What public safety improvements have you made and what more will you try to do?
We reinstituted several positions that had been deactivated. Over the last two years, I believe we have added 23 new police officers. Five, five firefighters this last year, I'm not sure about the previous year. And then we updated our 911 system that, that was, that was major appreciation. And working at, with this next budget, beginning to do more of the cameras.
Body cameras?
Body cameras, thank you. And so, you know, just some of the tools that our public safety officers need to, that are just the minimum, the basics. We will continue working to try and institute additional positions. I know that we are still short-staffed. So that is kind of the baseline. That is one of the things, the starting points. As far as another area of public safety, we are part of a pilot program that is coming in and working, looking at like hotspots of crime. Our crime statistics are unacceptable. You know, we just have, they're way too high in so many domestic violence, sexual abuse, assault, just theft, different things that, you know, it's a challenge and we are still working on it. And so it's the combination, add more, add more boots on the ground. More of our community neighborhood programs are being very effective, building relationships in our communities with our police officers to go, they're here to protect you. Know their names, know their faces, not just in the crisis or when you're in trouble and they show up. And then this third area of this pilot program that has been used in Fort Worth, that they are coming into Amarillo, looking at data, letting it be data-driven. Where are those crimes happening? Working on some of the structural things. What's causing the crime rate in that? As opposed to just trying to respond to the crime rate? What is the systemic problem that's going on? How do we address it as a community involving leaders in that neighborhood? The churches? In dealing with, really building relationships to avoid the crime instead of just responding to it?
Where do you stand on tax abatements and other incentive packages for prospective new businesses? And are the incentives for the potential Texas Tech Veterinary School worth the cost?
Well, the first one with, with tax incentives and abatements, I know that they are sometimes controversial, but it is, you know, it's kind of how the game is, is played now. It's like when you're competing with other cities and you're competing with businesses, especially in areas, if, if your city is growing organically, you don't have to incentivize in those areas. But you have to come up with incentives on areas that are not growing, which our downtown was dead and dying, which is crucial to overall economic development, as well as when we are trying to attract outside businesses, one of the first things they're looking at is, how's your downtown activity? Because they look at that as a reflection of your city's growing or it's not growing. They're also looking for a skilled workforce as well. I'll just throw that in there as a side. But with the incentives, one of the things, it would be like a comparison of you're running in a track race and everybody else is in blocks and cleats and you're standing there straight up with just your PF lyers.
Wow. The wind got our power, huh?
Wow.
So we just talked about where you stand on tax abatements and incentives for businesses. The second question was, are the incentives for potential Texas Tech University Vet School worth the cost?
The Texas Tech Vet School has the potential to be the biggest economic development driver in our city since Bell. And I am so excited about the potential for this project because it meets so many points that we have been stating we need in our, in, need in our city. And that four-year university, being able to provide an actual doctorate, a DVM, is an opportunity that we don't currently have. But when we look at the upfront, just, you know, the initial year, they're estimating around 90 million in construction. So that's an upfront economic investment that generates a lot of tax revenues. And then the ongoing is estimated to be around 76 million on an annual basis indefinitely as long as the university is in operation. And so the, in addition, the, the high skilled jobs that it attracts, it's high paying professor positions and all the staffing. It would, it would be amazing in our city. So it was, it was a big commitment. It was a big, bold move and I'm really proud of the EDC and of the city council for backing it. When we looked at how much they had already raised, Texas Tech had already raised a portion of, of that area they were needing for the initial construction. And the EDC, with the support of the city council, chose to backstop that investment of 69 million. Knowing as other individuals and businesses came in and made donations, it would keep lowering the amount of the potential contribution from the city, which it already has, I don't know the exact amount right now, how much it's been lowered, but by several million dollars that it just, the city's commitment keeps getting lower and lower. And I think we will end up at a much lower amount. What we are still working on and waiting on is approval from the Texas Legislature just for the operating expenses for the first few years until the university would be on its own footing, its own ability of, of self-sustaining. So we just need that last little piece to finish the cross line, finish line. And there, there will be a lot to celebrate.
This, thank you. This council drew some criticism for the, the ending a homeless camp that cropped up on the northern edge of downtown. And I know it's since launched Housing First Pilot Program that you may want to talk about, but also there is another camp that's set up nearby. So why we, why did we clear out this one and are not doing that there?
You know, that was a very difficult issue. And we have roughly around 31 agencies in our city that their, their sole purpose is dealing with the homeless situation. We had about five of those agencies that supported outdoor camping and being able to set up tents in a, in a specific area. We had about 25 of them that were also calling and emailing and stopping me in the grocery store saying, we do not support this. We see this as not a long-term solution in actually enabling some lack of services, being able, the accountability, that some of the other systems, hold your feet to the fire to, to be accountable, to provide service, go through to different agencies, especially for mental health treatment, for drug addiction treatment. And I compare it to, it was a, a point, a choice. If we as a city were going to respond similar to like Seattle and way, the way San Francisco has done, and the concerns that I had at the time have certainly developed in those other cities. The public sanitation, the health for the people in the camps, as well as the, as the rest of your city, is a huge problem. And so I do feel that we made the right decision to pursue different avenues and to be looking for solutions. The, the current, the second that, that you're describing, you know, it is working with actually transitioning those individuals into the Coming Home Program. So where it is, it truly is a short-term thing, trying to get into a long-term answer where there would be accountability. And that's a bit of the compromise to, to buy some time until we have enough housing where we could be able to house all those individuals.
Okay. What are your thoughts on the problematic rollout of the utility billing system? And why is, or how is that being corrected?
My, where I do my banking, about eight months ago, did a new software and a new security system. And it had a lot of challenges. You know, so when you have a large system that is being changed, you know, even in the private sector, there are problems sometimes with initial rollouts. It's just a big undertaking. And so, you know, I wish it would have gone more smoothly. It's not totally unexpected that you would have hurdles to jump. The, the department is working fast and furious to make the corrections. And, you know, we're, we're not having any penalties during this transition time if people don't get their bills on time or get them paid in time. To have a grace period and in the long run, I think it is going to be a much more efficient program. It is going to be something that makes just the different departments work more efficiently. So I think it will be worth it in the long run, but the, the implementation pains have, have definitely not gone unnoticed.
Now that the multipurpose event venue is opening, how will you be monitoring its operations to be sure the city gets what it paid for?
The biggest thing that we will be looking for are those sales tax collections that as merchandise is sold, as food is sold, is sold inside, as tickets. You know, the city receives a percentage of, you know, our sales tax collections and all that. We will absolutely be able to track it. Then you have a little less direct tracking available in your hotels. How many hotels, stays you, you have, the restaurants, other shopping. So we, we will be able to look at, okay, first of April, this opened. We see those being reflected in our June numbers. And we will be able to look back and track and see what, what we are receiving in return for. The investment of visitors' money. So I do want to clarify that, that the, the MPEV was not built through general fund dollars or bond money. It's all through hotel occupancy tax. So when people come and visit our city, stay overnight, So when people come and visit our city, stay overnight, a hotel collects that tax, and the state legislature restricts us as a city, how we can reinvest that. We have to put it in projects that have the potential to help the tourism industry and bottom line, help the hotel industry, since they were the ones that collected it. So that is, you know, when I look at it, it's like, visitors to our city have built us this really shiny, pretty ballpark that we get to go and attend, not just ballgames, but a lot of other community events. And in, in the meantime, hopefully attract them back to help us fund some other projects in the future.
And it's largely paid by that hotel motel tax, but there was some expense for property and things like that.
Right, and some utilities as well, some things that, and, and part of that was already planned, some of the replacement, water lines, things like that. So that, that's correct, that there was some front, upfront investment, but a, a very tiny part of what was contributed. And so it is, it is not tied to sales tax, it's not tied to property tax, it's tied to hotel occupancy tax.
Many residents believed the city should concentrate on the Civic Center and improvements there rather than the, the event venue. How do you get the Civic Center updated and how do you pay for it?
I am very excited about the conversations that are going on right now. And exactly what you said, Karen, was something that kind of surprised me two years ago in the campaign. When I would go door-to-door knocking and visiting with people, I had that question a lot. I, I would say, as a candidate going into it, I assumed that people who were opposed to the ballpark would also be opposed to spending dollars on the Civic Center. And that's not what I found. You know, I found, I would say, a broad support across the city for expanding our Civic Center. So we are, you know, we're making progress on that right now. We have assigned an executive committee to just begin some of the research, having those conversations. What is the status of our current facility? It's, it's old. And so looking at the needs, visiting with people who currently use our facility, as well as future potential users, what are they looking for? What, what do they, what are their size needs? What are their amenity needs? And being able to, in general, come up with some ideas, some designs, that then we're going to expand that committee to more, from the current five to 20 to 40 additional eyes and ears to look at those plans, look at the information, continue that design process, and then bring it to the public and say, is this, is this something we want to do as a city? And in the process, determining, then how are we going to pay for it? And there are a lot of different options, but you know, one of the, I'm guessing at least one of the pieces of the puzzle will be increased property tax rates. And so it will be up to our voters. That's like a shiny car. When I talked about a car versus a dress, a new Civic Center is definitely a car, and voters would be weighing in and make the ultimate decision.
When should city meetings take place and how can you get more people to participate?
When you look at, back at our history as city council, they have had meetings all times of the day, different locations, all across the city. And no matter what time you pick, you are going to include some people and exclude others. And, you know, I, I hate that. I wish that there were some perfect spot to land on that would make it more amenable to everybody. I have, you know, I've asked a lot of people in the city, you know, over the last several months, I'll just say, you know, what, what would be a convenient time for you if you, if we change meeting times? And most everybody, the response is, they're like, unless it's a major issue, I'm not going to be coming down to City Hall. I'm going to be, you know, trying to make phone calls, contact you individually, or I would make arrangements at the time to come. And so, you know, I do, I do understand people's frustration and recognize that it's not a convenient time always. But I would encourage people that really, one of the best ways to visit with us is to email us directly. You know, mine is elaine.hays@emerilla.gov. I put my cell phone out there on a lot of my public information. I get a lot of, of calls on issues just on my private cell phone. And it is a very effective way to, to contact us if you're not able to attend those public meetings.
How do you pay for new growth while still maintaining existing infrastructure? And should developers pay more of that cost of growth?
That is a conversation that we are going to need to have. The reality of the cost of development, if you close it off, then you're cutting off all your potential development and growth as well. If you developed beyond your means of sustainability as a city, then you're also getting yourself in trouble. So we have to look at the cost benefit, looking at, on a particular development, how much is the city going to contribute? Let's do some estimations on what we could expect in return. A lot of that has to do with how many homes are going on a particular plat, how, what the price tag of those are, whether or not, how much of percentage you can recoup just from direct sales tax or property tax collections. And so for me, absolutely the economic side, a cost-benefit analysis is something I need in making those decisions. And that is something we have as city staff as we begin going forward, just to provide as, as much of that information as possible. But in the big light of understanding, we need our developers and we need a good partnership. We just need something that's sustainable.